Lee. There we go. And whenever you're ready, you are all set. Yell out if you need.
All right. We're gonna call this June 22nd meeting on property, listen, on the college is an old Oakin Bucket 40B conference and permit application order. We are good everyone tonight from the high school library due to room availability. And before we get started with the applicant, I would like to read that the Situate zoning board of appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when they're in disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Tonight's meeting is available, obviously, attendance here in high school library and participation by Zoom, which we have here in the room. And login information for the Zoom meeting can be found on the Board of Appeals website. Attorney DeLeese, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Coming back.
You're welcome. Looks like we don't have microphones, right?
So I don't believe everyone's gonna use their outside voice.
Just to make sure that people could hear us.
Seth, how are you hearing us?
Seth is our Situate TV representative, probably thought he didn't have to pay attention for a minute.
I'm sorry, what do you need? You don't need to, if you're in Zoom, we're gonna hear you all through that little microphone that's on the bottom of the monitor. Look at that bottom, we're hearing you all, so.
And you can hear us loud and clear.
Got it?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks Seth. All right, so my name is Jeff DeLeese. I am a lawyer with a lot from Warner DeLeese in Paris here in Situate. I'm here tonight with my client, the applicant, metta development at Situate LLC. Also, in the audience in the front row is some of our development team, and that would be our engineer, Mark Casey of South Shore Survey Consulting. Mark is waiting in. And our architect Jeremy Lake of UGID Studio Architecture. And then Tricia and Busker are landscape architects. And virtually with us tonight is Jeffrey Dirk. Jeffrey is with Nass Associates and he is, his firm is our traffic consultants. Just to give a brief overview, since it's been a few months since we've been before the board, our last meeting was April 27th. At that time, it was our initial meeting and we proposed, we presented to the board our proposed project. Just to give a brief overview, all information that we knew going into this meeting, a result of the last meeting. The property consists of three assessors parcels having an aggregate area of about 11 acres of land. The address, the mailing address is 279 to 281 of Oakin Bucket Road. Last year, the conservation commission approved the delineation of the wetlands and that has become final. With respect to matters involving wildlife on the site, this is not a site that's, well, this is a site that is not located in a map priority habitat area. The property presently contains a two-family home, which has a total of five bedrooms. Last year, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issued a approval letter for this site, authorizing a maximum of 34 dwelling units and 90 bedrooms. At the last meeting, there was a question concerning the mixture of the total number of units on the site. We signaled a willingness to be flexible concerning the ultimate disposition of the two-family dwelling that's on the site, whether we keep it or not. And depending on that disposition, there would be a variance in the total number of dwelling units. And, but we indicated to you that under no circumstances will we be going under 90 bedrooms because we're constrained by our Title V requirements on that issue. So that's where we've been, where we're going. Our architects have taken into consideration many of the comments from the board since the last meeting and have advised us, that we've advised our concept to eliminate existing two-family dwelling. And instead of creating 34 units with 90 bedrooms, we're proposing 32 units having 90 bedrooms. We would be replacing that, that two-family dwelling with two units. So Jeremy's gonna go over the mixture of the units, how they lay out and so forth. We're proposing 26 three-bedrooms and 62 bedrooms. And 25% of the aggregate of those 32 dwellings would be designated as affordable. And we now have the count because that was a question that the board raised at the last meeting, wanting to ensure that there was kind of fairness across the board as to which of, how many of the three bedroom units, how many of the two bedroom units are designated, would be designated as affordable. We have that confirmation for you tonight. So just briefly as to process. Should the board approve this project, our next stop, our next stop would be to apply to the conservation commission, which has jurisdiction pursuant to the Wetland Protection Act over conservation matters that involve the Wetland Protection Act. The town, just recently, I think it was last week, signed its contract for its peer review engineer. And we were hoping to have the comments of the town's peer review engineer prior to this meeting and have been able to have responded. That hasn't happened and that's okay. But as a result of that, we did not revise our engineering plans because it would be fairly wasteful to revise them, to incorporate comments from the last meeting, just to revise them once again and maybe a second time all before the next meeting. So we expect our next meeting to address the engineering details and issues. And those include stormwater management and drainage, which is not a subject that we plan on discussing this evening. Because those would be matters that would be reviewed by the town's consultant. So since our last meeting, in addition to revising our architectural concepts, formalizing our plan with respect to the designated 40, not 40B affordable and low moderate income housing units. We finalized our traffic study. We formulated a landscape design and we submitted additional documents that we requested that concern site eligibility. And I think also water availability. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy right now, our architects, to review the submission and I'm gonna take it from there, if that's okay?
That sounds good to me. Okay, great.
Jeremy, if you mind pulling up our package to share with you.
Yeah, I can.
So since we last saw you guys, we've done a couple.
Go right up to it if you wanna point or whatnot, do whatever you want.
There's a couple of things that we've tried to incorporate since the last time we met with you. First was the way the front was composed. We'll talk about each of these things in a minute individually. How the affordable units were distributed. We had previously been showing like a meadow down in our reserve set that Gary had realized we didn't have to do that. That was actually misleading, so we've removed that, set it the way it was. And we've updated the landscape design to jive with what Tricia's come up with for that. So everything from about here back is going to look fairly similar. It's really from here forward at the front of the site that we made the biggest changes. Along Old Oakin Bucket, as Jeff alluded to, there was the two-family existing dwelling building that we have now removed. What that let us do was actually spread the units out that were at the front portion of the site. We previously had a pair of duplexes and a single-family detached home in that area. We've now been able to spread those out, so we now have five single-family detached. We think it's kind of a nicer, better fit for the rest of the context of Old Oakin Bucket. One of the other minor comments there was we had a few curb cuts because we had a few of those driveways exiting right off onto Old Oakin Bucket. So what we actually did was effectively flipped these units. Their front doors would still be along Old Oakin Bucket, but now their garages are actually in the back or on the sides. And we've introduced the shared driveway. So it's a driveway that those five units would use to get back to their garage. So what's really great is from Old Oakin Bucket, A, you don't have to look at the garage doors, but B, you don't have cars trying to come and go or back out of there. They literally turn into the community like anybody else here would and use that shared drive to access their garages. We always had a little green space at the front. The character of that has manipulated a little bit and I'll let Tricia talk a little bit more about that. So overall, we think that's actually sort of changed for the better. We have 32 units total, 90 bedrooms, as Jeff was mentioning. What else? The affordable units. So we have six of the two-bedroom duplex units, 16 of three-bedroom duplex units, 10 three-bedroom, single-family detached units, 32 total units, 25% of that is eight. What we also tried to do was try to distribute the 25% by each of the types that we have as well. So the easy one was the three-bedroom duplexes. We had 16 of those total. So four of those, 25%, will be affordable. We've got two of those here and we've got two of those here, so we tried to distribute those a little bit. What was tricky was when we had six and 10, those don't divide really nicely into 25%. So the six two-bedroom units, 25% of six is one and a half, we rounded that up to two. And with the 10 three-bedroom, single-family, again, 25% with 2.5, we rounded that down to two so that we could come out at the eight total. And again, we distribute those pretty evenly throughout as well. So we have one of the single-family is here, again, I pointed out the duplex here with affordable units. The other single-family here. Here are some of the other affordable units, here are some of the affordable units. So again, I think we distributed them more reasonably by the bedroom type and throughout the community as well. They're here, they're everywhere, the way everybody would like them to be. So we think that was a big improvement as well. Before I pass it over to Tricia to talk about the landscape, if you could go to the next page. You saw this rendering previously, but we've now revised the front portion so you can see how that looks with the single-family homes. That idea of the shared drive that runs behind their garages or in the back of the house instead of in the front. And then if you don't mind going to the next page, a new rendering showing out on Old Oakin Bucket Road. This was one of the comments you made, what will this look like out for the community itself? Here you can see it really is just a series of these smaller, single-family detached homes. Their front porches, their front doors, we have a walk so that they have a means of getting back into the community. We have a mail kiosk at the entry point that will also serve a bit of, as an entry feature as well, creating a little bit of a place-making moment, place for the residents to pull over, grab their mail and keep going, although I think a lot of them use the sidewalks and walk out to grab their mail and see their neighbors. So again, this is a new rendering that we wanted to add in per your suggestion or request of trying to understand what it would look like. And also just to reinforce the fact that now out on Old Oakin Bucket, which is what most folks will see, you just see in the single-family detached homes. So I'm happy to answer any questions or I can let Tricia talk through the landscape and then we can collectively answer questions too.
Do you have a general idea what the existing home was?
Yeah, the existing home was more or less like where this one was, sort of sitting right about here. So previously, I think we had tried, actually it might have been a little bit over more. I think we had like a pair of duplexes out here and a single over here. And so that it was really along this front edge that we could really sort of spread them out when we got rid of that, that structure, so. So I'll let, go ahead.
Do you work on the site to consider units on Old Oakin Bucket? That's sort of the typical residential setback for a review fee.
We'd have to look at that. I think that the challenge we have is that because we wanna introduce the driveway behind the unit and just behind the driveway is the wetlands. So we're sort of up against the wetlands and so the trade-off of trying to get the driveways off the front, you're gonna have to push the homes back and bring the driveways up. So I think we thought this was a better solution for, you know, for a couple of reasons.
That does bring up one question I had. One of the items that I think we left off last meeting, we need folks to have for us was a setback plan. Attorney DeLeese, you'd be pretty familiar with what we typically see on a residential special permit. You know, this is obviously, there's a lot more technicals than an application like that, but we still have to deal with those setbacks and I don't think we've seen that before.
You haven't. Yeah, no, that's something typically that we'll have in the engineering plan.
Yeah.
So we were, you know, that's, goes into the.
I understand that's the sort of rock and hard place there with that, but I think that will.
That, that's coming, so you will be able to see. And, and I don't, I'm not, I haven't done the analysis either, but but there is an exception, as the board is probably aware of, the average on the front yard. And I don't, I don't know whether the exception would apply to the property in hesitation.
Probably not going. Okay, I'm pretty familiar with the neighborhood.
Yep.
There's a lot of houses that are being setback.
Yep.
There aren't many that are probably even up against the 30. But even that aside, as we review this in the totality, I think, and Bob, I think you agree, it's helpful to note, are we looking at 11? Are we looking at 29 and a half or are we looking at 31 setback? Or is one of them at 25 and the other two are at 32? You know, there's, there's scales in this in the overall. So we'll just keep that on a list near the top of the list.
Yeah, and I'm more than happy to go through my lists of items that we did not address and we know that we have to.
Yes. Yeah, I was, I didn't mean to interrupt the flow.
Okay. Oh no, that's fine. And I think I would just say, working with Mark, we can certainly try to squeeze them back as much as we can go, but I don't think 30 is gonna be possible, again with the rear drive and the wetlands. We just don't have the room to keep pushing unfortunately, so.
One other thing I'm trying to do, yeah, some proof of thought more than anything else, but we have a similar development that's almost complete, 40B called Stocked Landings. And at Stocked Landing, what they've done is a duplex unit typically would have two bedroom, the case of Stocked Landing, and then perhaps one bedroom. They're not, in other words, mirror images of each other. And what that's allowed them to do is scatter their affordable units. So that it's not an entire building, it's two or four of them units. It's a building that has one affordable unit and one market unit. So the affordable, you know, the effect of that is to not isolate, if you will, for concentrate the affordable units quite as much. I don't know if you considered that or not.
It's interesting. That's, I was actually rather pleased with what you came back with on the reallocation and relocation of the affordable units. You're putting, I, I, putting a three-bedroom affordable unit as a detached building with frontage on Old Oakin Bucket feels like a win for us. And that's great. I did notice, and we noticed as we were putting them on the ground here, we just got this, that there are two spots where attached affordable units are in the same building. Those buildings are, are spread around. And I, I feel like you could look at that either way. Do you wanna have, you know, the mailbox post and all the add-ons that you see as people buy these condominiums? The distinction might be a little more apparent if it's a market rate unit next to an affordable unit. So that's a negative. Then again, if, oh, that's the affordable building, all right, that's a negative. I feel like you could almost flip a coin there. I, and that's something we were talking about, but again, I think that's probably something that plays into the totality. Definitely something to keep on the list.
I will suggest, with what we're proposing, there aren't, there isn't a specifically affordable unit type. In other words, we have a three-bedroom duplex. Sometimes they're markets, sometimes they're affordable from the street, they look the same. So it is, in some ways, we could move those things around, wouldn't have an impact on the visual character of the community. So we just thought, you know, to the degree we can.
More sociological.
Yeah, and I think for me, it's like they're still in the community, right? And they're not all in one corner in a very different building type. You know, our, we do intend for the lines to be blurred. When you're out here, you shouldn't know who's who or why, so.
I will finish it, exterior, exterior, same.
I'll look to Dan, but I think, I think on the exterior, probably similar. But on the interior, that might be the ability to maybe change out of countertops or cabinets or something.
Baseline is reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, if your question is, can we offer a lower baseline? It's the baseline, it's the baseline for us, the board, and it's a question of upgrades from that.
That holds true with exterior and interior.
If exterior is probably gonna, we're probably gonna control that a little bit more with uniformity. But, you know, if you, it's based on my conversations, if you have anything you put on, then I will do as well.
Yeah, the, the minimum package of the bill we deliver. And then from there, the affordable units probably won't have much selection past that, as the market rates will. But if we're not talking, there's still gonna be tighter from market talks and.
Right, right.
So it'll still be, you're not gonna have carpet in the dining room.
Just want to address on the exterior materials used. Same, I would be covered in 40B, you know, what we have been doing here too. Materials used exterior-wise, that you are not supposed to be able to distinguish between affordable and market.
Yeah.
So shit. Pass it over to Tricia, let her get through the landscape plan. Again, I'm happy to keep answering questions too before or after.
Good to hear.
Okay. So Jean, if you don't mind, bring up the same package, actually. I think she's gonna speak to the color site plan that I was talking to.
Delay tactic. She, she doesn't want me to highlight the landmark. Right now, she without, she hates the landmark every time.
Everybody does. I'm sorry.
Janine, it's just not letting you do it, huh? It's just saying.
I can see it, but.
It's on the image. It's a blue quarter and it doesn't come up on the screen.
Janine, you're just trying to share like that document, right? It could be that you may need to share your desktop and then do it that way, even though that may not be ideal for you, but.
Might have to prepare to go human easel if you don't mind. And maybe, maybe over here gives the folks at home a chance as well. Absolutely. I think that is the old plan. I did not have a freaked out on the new one.
Okay.
I probably.
Did you talk through it?
All right, I'll let you get back.
We wanted to. I'll steer it.
Okay, that's pretty good.
Okay, so I'll, I'll walk you through the overall plan. And starting with the boundaries, the, there be the western side, obviously we're constrained by the wetlands. So the, the, as it there's to mostly keep the existing vegetation as much as possible, keep it on the start. Same with the southern side. On the east, we have the butters. So the idea is to try screening with the cedar fence, solid cedar fence and tree canopy above. And then the front, we have the streetscape, which we're just looking at, I'm trying to remember that. Where we have, I'll start at the front as you drive in and the things that you see along the way. The open green at the entry here with the mail kiosk and canopy trees and visibility out to the street. So that is safe for turning in and out. And then coming along the road, in this area, there's an old stone wall as nice characters. So we're gonna be keeping that and highlighting that with trees as we drive along. And coming to the central green, that's gonna be an open recreation space with canopy trees and play structure, something to draw for kids there, like a, a mound, a bit of a bed and slide, I think. And then coming out to the end, a special overlook area, oh dude, oh yeah.
That's, that's better. There we go.
Can I just, can I just interrupt you briefly and just kinda give a concept here? What, what we have with this site, it's kinda unique insofar as two of the sides, like if you think of it as a rectangle, you have the street. Then you have, if you're looking at the site standing on the street, you have the left sideline. That sideline is the sideline where there are, there are a couple of homes along the sideline. And then in the rear, there's just, there's just woods for very far. And on the right, there are just woods. So it's, it's, it's unique insofar as the concept is, is on the, on the right, which, which it shows underneath. We have, we have wetland areas that constrain our, our ability to do anything within that, that canopy area. And so the concept is, is well, let's keep it, we're gonna keep it, keep all the canopy there on, on the right or the bottom. And at the rear, which is, which is to, I don't know, to the right maybe if we're looking at the plan. That canopy's all staying and then the concept is create some space at the very end. Tricia, would you point that out?
Uh, the very end, yeah.
Yeah, where there would be kind of like a little green area for picnicking and benches and so forth, you know, looking in that direction. And then along the side where there are homes, that would be a cedar fence. And then there would be a mixture of vegetate, vegetative screening and, and also seasonal trees along that entire edge. And then in addition to that, once we kind of work the perimeter, the concept is, is that we wanna create as much recreational space as we could. So rather than having, you know, planting areas and vegetation growing in the middle of the site, we're keeping that almost like a campus, like quad style situation for children and so forth. And then we have another one of those places up towards the front. This is the old plan. The newer plan also shows the area along the front. Along Old Oakin Bucket Road, that would be still, still, you know, grassed. So, so those were the concepts, I think, of what we're trying to do. And, and, and I jumped in only because it's, it's hard to show it on the, on the screen if we're not screen sharing. But that's pretty much what I had to add. I don't know, Tricia, if you wanted to add anything further.
That's great. The only thing I would add is the streetscape among the sidewalk. As many canopy trees as possible, flowering trees where we don't have the full space. There'll be lamp posts and.
And, 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 and the lamp posts are gonna be, you know, pointed downward, they're not gonna be pointed, you know, off-site, right along those lines. The buildings are gonna serve as shields for any headlights. And so is the fencing and obviously the trees. So we can't expect any headlights to pass off-site, really. So that's the overview of what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
I think this.
One of the things the site has going for it is natural buffers that for better or worse because of the wetlands, especially they're not necessary. Useful from a buffer. And I think probably why we hear more concerns over fewer sightlines from hit letters up to this point, we'll see a lot of development. And I think probably why we hear more concerns over few sightlines from hit buffers up to this point, we'll see if we develop. Concerned correctly elsewhere. Any questions on landscaping, comments on landscaping? Uh, ye- yes, I think that, but maybe that makes sense, just your, your name and address for the record.
Liz O'Reilly, one seventy nine Maple. Did I understand you were saying that the reserve set the area, that that's not gonna be devalued, you know, the trees already downed enough?
Not initially, exactly, I mean, it, it is a reserve set the area.
But then it'd be ten years.
Could be ten, twenty, thirty years, yeah. At one point we had talked about like, oh, let's make a little meadow space down there, we realized it's more trouble than it was worth, it wasn't really adding up to much.
My other question is with the five houses on Old Oak Bucket, I would like to see them set back further, but also, that's a scenic road. So trees that are on the town property and the stone walls would have to be put back up, is that the plan?
So that was the issue, I think, that was raised, that I know this place had that last meeting, it's on my list to. Look at what, what within the layout of the road, right? Because the scenic, the scenic road jurisdiction, it, which is a town issue, right? So it's something that could be waived from the obvious permit concept. The, the jurisdiction is limited to anything within the layout of the road. So if there's an ancient wall within the layout of the road, we look at that. If there is, you know, any, if there's any, if there are any substantial trees within the layout of the road, we would look at that. Ordinarily, the planning board would be the permanent planning authority under the scenic, scenic road bylaw. And it's, it's this board for this purpose. And so we need to, I'm glad that you mentioned that, we need to. Do a, do a little survey as to what is within the layout of the road along Old Oak Bucket Road.
I know there is a stone wall in front of the, in the whole area of the, um, house.
Okay.
And going into the entrance, it goes correctly to property, you know, plaza.
The good, the good. What, what are the benefits of this concept here is that we're, we're access, we're proposing to access those homes from the rear. Right, on the plan that was just shared on the screen earlier. Which means that a long old oak bucket road. Within the layout of the road, we could keep anything that's there.
I just didn't compare it to try to blend it into the rest of the street.
Yeah.
As a scenic road.
Yeah.
And one other question, the area that you said you'd put the play area down in that right, isn't that septic? So you have trees on top of the septic?
The septic's gonna be on this side.
Okay.
And then the trees, there are some street trees here, and then the trees that are in the septic area, they're not right over it, but they're near it, and they're gonna be in like. Stone, little stone seat walls, like in a box, above grade.
Just don't want that reserved ten years.
Right, 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 yeah, so it will be, the play area will be over on this side.
So I guess, just in terms of the reserve area, there's still, and I, I feel. Uniquely aware of this concern since until about four and a half years ago, I was the director butter on that side, so I'm pretty familiar. There's still a pretty good buffer in there, that is a rather dense forest. And that, that lot, two ninety seven, was well back with trees. Even if that reserve area was being used, maybe in the absolute dead of winter, you'd be able to see into what at that time would be a clearing.
Like right now, I can see when it's down in winter, I can see from the back of my house, I'll be at the farmhouse shop, just next to the property used.
Sure, so if.
When there's no foliage, you can see straight through.
Yeah, but, you know, in terms of relief and what this board would be concerned with. Some clearing on that lot, which is the worst case scenario for that reserve area being used, wouldn't typically be an area of concern. Now, if they were, if they're putting things in there, and attorney Delisi mentioned, if we had cars parking on that area, different. Because that goes to the density, this is more dense than is allowed, that would be a, you know, an offshoot of that density, and that would be a concern. Just clearing that area? It's hard for us to put that on the list of wants or concerns with everything else we have going on, at least. In my opinion, and then just to go to the, the stone wall. If you're going to violate or bend that bylaw, obviously we need to talk about it, we need to get into whether we give relief. At the same time, there is a stone wall there, I'm, I'm not sure, the interviews will certainly confirm whether or not that stone wall is, is on the applicant's property or, or within the right of way. Stonewall uses some sprucing off, I, I think you would, I agree with that, so.
I just thought the, the, just trees down, you know, the stone wall is.
Yeah, and, and.
And I just think compared to the road.
Well, for the, that's actually, that stone wall is somewhat unique there along Old Oak Bucket for that street. There's only a few others, and the, the majority of properties don't have it. That stone wall has been in a bit of disrepair for a while, so I, I think there's a good chance with whatever we end up doing, we'll have to get into the specifics of that. We'll have to determine if we need relief from that bylaw, but I think there's a good chance there to turn, to make it better. Not even to, to make a sacrifice for a butters room in town here. But definitely something to. You know, I. Been there for a long time, I still drive there by there all the time, for the better part of more than a decade. There are sections of that street, including along this property, that could be pretty. So I, I think hopefully we, we're making things better with the frontage and not worse. But that's gonna be a continued part of the conversation.
So, if there are no other questions for Tricia, then, then I would say let's move over, we're holding a traffic discussion.
Yeah.
We would expect that to be able to go on here. Before now.
Yep.
So that everybody's gonna stay. You have questions?
Sure, so let's, we sort of started with the public, or unless anyone on the board has it. Unit allocation and locations and landscaping perimeter sort of questions. Board for the public, I think sometimes it's helpful, we do the public comment, sort of these. Sigh light goes, so people forget, or the applicant doesn't forget, or the board doesn't forget what we talked about half an hour earlier. Anyone on Zoom with any questions about unit allocations, locations, landscaping or perimeter appearance or things like that? Okay, and you can do that by turning on your video and raising your hand, or raising your Zoom hand. Anyone in the audience with any other questions, units or landscaping, if you have more, please. All right.
Alright, so, so Jeffrey Dirk is, I see, I see his face on the screen. I, I, if, if you can, Jeff's gonna have some slides he wanted to share, if you're really able to bring them up. If you can grant Jeff maybe some shared privileges, you might be able to do it from there.
Mr. Dirk does have the ability as well to do all that, if Janine cannot.
So he's got him, got him.
So, you ready for me, Jeff?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Attorney Delisi had mentioned, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, I'm the managing partner with Vinessen Associates. And we're the transportation consultants for the project. So I, I have a brief slideshow that will go through, that just really summarizing at a high level the aspects of the transportation assessment that we had conducted. And certainly be happy to answer any detailed questions that the board or audience members may have as I've finished. So as Attorney Delisi had mentioned, we just submitted. Let's see if I can get this to drive forward. So can you see my screen?
Mr. Dirk, we cannot, I believe we're seeing Janine's, just so you're aware, Janine, do you want Mr. Dirk to share so that?
It's okay, if she want, if she wants to drive the slideshow, that, that's perfectly fine with me.
That, that would be better, Jeff.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine with me, it'll, hopefully alleviate any technical, technical difficulties. So if you could go to the next slide, please, Janine? Thank you. So by way of a summary of our, our assessment, so it is a transportation assessment, so we're looking at all modes of transportation, so. Vehicles, pedestrians and bicycles, as well as public transportation services. We do know the Green Bush commuter rail line, it's, it's obviously a benefit in terms of proximity to the project site. Challenging in terms of crossing Route three A to get there, but it's certainly something that's a benefit for the residents of the project to be able to have that in close proximity to the project site. So the traffic volumes and the data collection that we had undertaken as a part of the assessment, it was conducted in November twenty twenty one, while schools were in session. An important thing, obviously, as we're looking at traffic studies conducted while we're still in the COVID pandemic, although. From a traffic standpoint, I think we've all experienced that traffic volumes have. Gotten back to somewhere close to levels, pre-pandemic levels, we're starting to see the congestion and backups starting to happen back where we had seen them previously. That being said, the patterns have changed, and you may have read a little bit about this in some of the recent articles in the Boston Globe in terms of time of day and when they're happening. We still have, do have people working from home, and so that has impacted not only the volumes, but also the times of day when we're starting to see congestion. So we do make adjustments of the traffic volumes to account for that. The Department of Transportation has criteria that we use to make those adjustments. And the real, really the premise of it is that we look backwards to see where we might be going forward. So we look back at traffic volumes that were collected pre-pandemic, so twenty nineteen, and Mass DOT considers twenty nineteen to be existing conditions. So anytime we're conducting a traffic study, twenty nineteen is the base year that we look at, so even if we collect traffic counts in twenty twenty one. We need to look at what those volumes were pre-pandemic in twenty nineteen, and then make whatever adjustments are necessary so that we're starting with a twenty nineteen, essentially, that is the baseline condition. So we, we've undertaken that type of an adjustment as a part of the project. The other thing is that we look at seasonality, so November is considered a below average traffic volume month. So we also look at traffic volumes on the Route three A corridor to see what average month conditions are, and average month conditions are really around April, May, and then September, October, that's when traffic volumes are average. They peak in the summertime, as you might imagine in this area, but the patterns are a little bit different because we don't have school traffic, so. We make adjustments to cover seasonality as well as looking at impacts to COVID, and that was all done as a part of our assessment. Now, in terms of looking at the specific impacts of the project, and we'll, we'll look at some numbers in, in a minute or so. The project's impact was not shown to be significant, and when we're talking about significance, we're looking at delays at intersections, so how much do delays increase? And then I think what's most apparent to people is the backups at intersections, so if I'm approaching the Situate Rotary on one twenty three. There's so many cars in, in queue or backed up as I'm trying to merge into that traffic. How many more cars will be there after the project's built, and so that's really what we're measuring, and so that's what people would see most, most apparent is how many more cars are backed up at the intersection. So if we look at conditions before and after the project's traffic is added, what we found was that delays do not increase by more than two and a half seconds, so that's not something that's really perceivable. And that there was no increase in vehicle queuing, and really the reason for that is that the project itself, I mean, in terms of how much additional traffic it generates during the peak hours, when people are. Going to school, or going to work, or coming home from school, or coming home from work. The project adds about fifteen to twenty vehicles over a one hour period, so that's one additional vehicle every three to four minutes. So if you're looking at impacts over that level of, of activity, that's why you don't see a significant impact, because really traffic is processed over a three to four minute period, so the queues. You get to move up to the intersection and get onto Route three A, and so there is capacity created by just the movement of the vehicles, and again, we. The, the increase from the project is one additional vehicle every three to four minutes during those peak time periods, so that we didn't see any significant increases in, in delays or queuing. We were specifically asked to look at impacts of the Situate Rotary, so as we looked at the increase in traffic that we'd be adding there. The net increases about five to seven vehicles during the peak hours, and then again, if we break that down, it's one additional vehicle every nine to twelve minutes during those peak time periods. So again, that's not something that will be readily apparent or perceivable over existing conditions. A next slide, please. We did identify the two high crash locations within the study area that we looked at. Those high crash locations were the Old Oak and Bucket Road intersection with Maple Street and Winter Street. And then the one twenty three intersection with Old Oak and Bucket Road, so we did focus on how this project may be able to address those high crash locations. I do want to mention that the one twenty three Old Oak and Bucket, Old Oak and Bucket Road intersection. Was included as a part of a road safety audit that was undertaken, that was done as a part of the Situate Rotary road safety audit, so the road safety audit for the Rotary included the one twenty three Old Oak and Bucket Road intersection as well. So improvements have already been defined at that location, and there are improvements that are, are things that we could advance as a part of this project. The Old Oak and Bucket Road intersection with Maple and Winter did, did not have the benefit of a road safety audit. So we're, we are actually in process of undertaking that road safety audit now, and we'll talk about that later on in the presentation. And then lastly, lines of sight at the driveway to the project site, so I think one of the last things that we were just talking about was about the scenic road ordinance of the bylaw. And how it relates to the project, so as we look at where the access to this project site is, there will be some need for. Evaluating some of the things we were just talking about, which is the stone wall and the vegetation that exists out there today. And make a determination as to whether there's any tree trimming that may need to take place. We're not planning any removal of trees, however, general maintenance of vegetation is something that we've recommended as part of the study, just to make sure that we have clear sightlines looking to the left or right. From the access to the project site. Next slide, please. So this slide, I guess is a very high level overview of, of where the project site is located, so the site is shown in yellow. The dash line that you see in yellow, that's the Situate Norwell Town Line. If you look far to the right on the slide where the T is in purple, that's where the Green Bush commuter rail station is. And probably just to the left of that, but very small, is where you can see the Situate Rotary just kind of showing up in that area there, so. You can see the relationship, and I think just the relationship really of the site to the Green Bush commuter rail station. Route three A running in a general northwest, southeast direction on the slide, and then one twenty three is, is running in. A southwest to northeast direction on the slide here. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the, the study area that we evaluated for the project, and again, given the fact that it's producing fifteen to twenty peak hour trips. As you imagine, as you get away from the project site, those numbers get smaller, and so the intersections that we looked at are the, the intersections that are most proximate to the site, so the Maple Street, Winter Street intersection. And then the one twenty three intersection, that fifteen to twenty peak hour trips as it comes out of the project site. Disperses, goes through both of those intersections, and that's where if there's an impact from the project, it would be most pronounced and show up at those locations. As you expand beyond those intersections, the numbers really turn to single digit numbers, and so you would not see an impact for the project, so that, that's kind of how, that's how these intersections were selected. They're the most proximate and the locations where you would see an impact from the project, just given its proximity to the project site. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the increase in traffic that the project is expected to generate. From the standpoint of the site plan, as you looked at it, there are basically two components, we have attached and detached dwelling units. They generate different types of traffic or have different traffic characteristics, so the trip generation calculations that you see here. Separate out those two modes, and in general, single family homes produce more traffic on a per unit basis than attached homes, and so. That's why we generate the trips a little bit differently for, for each of those uses, so. The first column, column A is the single family homes, column B is the attached homes, and then if you look to the far right, that's the total amount of traffic that we're expecting to produce. So the top number that you see, the two hundred and forty, that's the daily number over twenty-four hour basis. So if you stood at the entrance to the project and you counted every vehicle that enters and exits the project site, that's the number that you'd arrive at, so it's a hundred and twenty vehicles entering, a hundred and twenty exiting. That includes all traffic, so it's not just the residents, it's visitors, it's guests, it's FedEx, UPS. All type of traffic or types of vehicles that you would expect that would serve a single family home that we're all familiar with, including Amazon. That's what these numbers arrive at, and these numbers are developed based on recent, recent data that was collected in twenty twenty one, so it includes all. Modes of, of transportation or that we're kind of familiar with on a daily basis. The next two numbers, the first one is the morning peak hour, so this is the volume of traffic the project would generate during the. So this is the volume of traffic the project would generate during the highest traffic volume hour in the morning. So as we look at the traffic volumes on Old Oak and Bucket Road, the traffic peaks between eight and nine in the morning. And so this is the amount of traffic that we would produce during that eight to nine in the morning time period. So it's our, our peak hour added to the peak hour of Old Oak and Bucket. So we're going to add fifteen trips to Old Oak and Bucket between that eight to nine in the morning period. The next number that you see is twenty. That is during the evening peak hour. The evening peak hour on Old Oak and Bucket Road occurs between four and five in the evening. And so we'll be adding twenty vehicles on top of that peak hour traffic. And so adding the fifteen and the twenty on top of the peak hour of traffic on Old Oak and Bucket Road, it's kind of, it's a peak on top of a peak. So it's a worst-case analysis condition. And this is where we look at assessing the impacts of the project. If we assume the peak of the project occurs at the same time as the peak on the roadway, then that's the worst-case analysis condition, and we can assess what the impacts of the project may be. Next slide, please. So this, this slide, it's, it's termed traffic trip dispersal. So this is really, as we looked at the traffic volumes in the prior table, this is how that traffic disperses itself onto the roadway network and through the two intersections that we looked at as a part of the assessment. So just in general, what you see is about sixty percent of the traffic is oriented towards one twenty-three and then distributes itself about thirty-six percent heading towards the Rotary, twenty-seven percent towards Norwell. The balance, about forty percent is oriented to and from the west of the project site. You can see fifteen percent heading into Norwell and Old Oak and Bucket, six percent again back into Norwell and Winter Street, and then sixteen percent on Maple Street to and from the north. So what this speaks to really is you look at that fifteen to twenty trips. And now we look at this dispersal, you can see as you, as you get further away from the project site, those numbers get smaller and smaller. And so again, as we look at impacts, they're going to be most pronounced at the two intersections proximate to the project site. So as we look at impacts in particular, and we'll stick with this slide to talk about that. Again, the bulk of the traffic is heading towards one twenty-three. And so what we found in terms of impacts of the project is really, again, back to the increases in delay, it's no more than about two and a half seconds of increased delay. And that would occur at the one twenty-three intersection. And the delay, we didn't show any increase in vehicle queuing. So what we found was that, as we look at where the majority of the traffic is flowing out towards one twenty-three, if you're on the Old Oak and Bucket Road approach to one twenty-three, the delays will go up by about two and a half seconds. But what you see in terms of backups at that intersection is you're waiting to make a left or right-hand turn there, you're not going to see any additional cars in front of you. And the reason for that is that the traffic does get processed at the intersection. There are delays, but the, the traffic moves through there. We do know there are delays from the Rotary that sometimes extend down to this area as well. But again, our relative impact on the project is not significant in terms of adding to the delays or the queuing that happens at, at either of those intersections. Next slide, please. So after we've assessed the impact of the project, we have a series of recommendations. And we have two basic sets of recommendations. The first deal with the project itself, so the access, the driveway, the internal circulation within the site. And then the next slide, we'll talk about off-site recommendations. So in terms of the site access recommendations, these are all reflected on the site plans that have been presented to you. So the driveway and internal circulating roads, we want to make sure that twenty-four feet in width, they accommodate turning and maneuvering requirements for emergency vehicles. So those will all, all things that are shown as a part of the site plan. We do know that we received some information from the fire department today on the, of the fire truck so that we're going to be able to actually drive the fire truck along the roadway network and make sure that any places where we have corners or where the fire truck needs to get to, that the roadway is properly designed to accommodate for those maneuvering and access requirements for the fire department vehicle. Vehicles exiting the project site to Old Oak and Bucket Road will have a stop sign and a stop line there to control entering and exiting traffic. All signs within the project site will meet standards. Pedestrian walkways are provided within the project site. They will extend to Old Oak and Bucket Road. There is not a sidewalk on Old Oak and Bucket Road today. However, what we want to make sure of is that, and especially for any schoolchildren, that as they walk out to get the school bus at Old Oak and Bucket Road, that they have a sidewalk to walk on. And then as they get to the Old Oak and Bucket Road, they have a safe area to wait for the school bus to be able to pick them up. And the same thing, of course, when they come home, that they're able to get dropped off, be able to get on a sidewalk and then walk into the project site. So that's, that's why it's important to make sure we have that connection, if nothing else, within the project site. And we provide the recommendations for driveways. And sometimes you don't always see this on, on the site planes, but there are specific criteria for driveway length. And so we provided those recommendations to make sure that as the units are designed, the driveways are long enough so that vehicles are accommodated without the rear end sticking out into the traveled way. And so these two dimensions that we provided, twenty-one feet between the garage door and the fire, far edge of the sidewalk were provided, and then twenty-three feet between the garage door and the edge of the traveled way, if there's not a sidewalk. Those dimensions are critical because no one pulls their car, if you park in the driveway, you don't pull your car right up to the bumper, right up to the garage. You leave room so that you can walk around both the front and the back of the car. So these dimensions ensure that as a vehicle pulls in and parks, that there is enough room to walk around the front or the back of the car without the pedestrian being either into the sidewalk or out into the roadway. So that's why these dimensions are critical. So we've provided these for, as by way of guidance, as the units are developed within the project site. And then the last recommendation deals with those sightlines. So making sure that we have clear sightlines at the access point to the project site. So you can look to the left or right along Old Oak and Bucket Road, see a vehicle that's approaching you and safely be able to enter or exit the project site. So we provided recommendations for that. Next slide, please. So lastly, in terms of the off-site recommendations. So as I mentioned, we have two intersections that are designated as high crash locations. One of them, the one twenty-three Old Oak and Bucket Road intersection, has had the benefit of a road safety audit. So if anyone's not familiar with a road safety audit, what it is, is it's basically, it's an inventory or an audit of an intersection that looks at specifically what is going on in terms of the crashes that are there and comes up and develops a series of recommendations or suggestions for improvements that can be undertaken to enhance safety at the intersection. The road safety audit is conducted in conjunction with the town. So police, fire, public safety departments, public works, a planning department, they're, they're all involved in the road safety audit. It's conducted by an independent trans, traffic engineer. So it's not, it's something that we, we cannot prepare because we're, we're not independent because we're working on this project. So an independent traffic engineer conducts the road safety audit. And it's essentially a design shred where all of those persons that I had mentioned, including Mass DOT and the Regional Planning Agency, all participate in the road safety audit and go through those criteria I had mentioned, really looking at what are the existing conditions, what are the potential causes or contributing factors of the crashes that are happening at the intersection, and then what can be done to address those crashes. And so that gets published in a document, which is known as a road safety audit. And from that is a series of recommendations that we as transportation professionals or the town can look at and select the improvement measures to be implemented at the intersection. It also allows the town to secure state funding to implement the improvements. So even if you have an intersection such as the Maple Winter Street intersection, that's not a state location, you can still apply for straight funding through grant programs to address safety at the intersection. However, the road safety audit is, is the first thing that has to be undertaken to unlock the opportunity to apply for any funding for safety improvements. So as I mentioned, the one twenty-three Old Oak and Bucket Road has already had the road safety audit undertaken. So we know what the suggestions are for in safety enhancements at that location. The Winter Street intersection with Old Oak and Bucket does not, does not have a road safety audit. So we, we've agreed to undertake that road safety audit to the extent that the town is desirable or desirous of having that done. We do have a, a independent transportation consultant that's already been engaged to undertake that effort. So I think one of the things in terms of feedback from the board that will be helpful is to understand if the town would like to have that road safety undertaken. And again, that will be done at the developer's expense. We already have a consultant that's ready to do that. A Mass DOT is just asked to make sure that the town is desirous of having that undertaken. So some feedback tonight as to direction on, on the road safety audit would be, would be helpful to us. So we can communicate back to Mass DOT that the town does, in fact, want to have that undertaken. Lastly, in terms of the outcome of the road safety audit, we, we've been committed to providing a financial contribution to the town to, to undertake the improvements that are recommended as, as an outcome of the road safety audit. So again, that's kind of the second step in the process here, which is first identify the improvements. And then secondly, provide a financial contribution to undertake those improvements. We, we've committed to doing that as well. And I guess that'll be a, a subsequent discussion with the zoning board. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board or has now or later on in the presentation.
Sure. Thank you. I guess. First and foremost, regarding the road safety audit, I think TPW is where we want to go to ask that question. I can't think of a downside to having you undertake the road safety audit. But if there was a downside, I don't think I'd be the person that would know about it. So we're going to ask TPW, and I think also would be appropriate since hopefully currently, we have our peer review engineer also engaging in a review of the traffic situation at the project, reviewing your traffic analysis. But I think it's appropriate that we pose that question to them as well. And we will do that in earnest to try to get you an answer on that. I will be surprised if the answer is, oh, no, we don't want you to do that. But it's probably best that we ask them that first.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a, it's a, it's certainly a benefit to the town. There's, I would say there's no down, downside to it. It's a, it's a planning tool, if nothing else, so that it provides some guidance for even just future maintenance activities that the town may undertake.
Yeah. And then for me, and something that I would encourage for the public as well, is these are the findings of the applicant's traffic consultant. I would like very much to avoid getting into contesting these findings tonight. The board has hired a peer review engineer, which will cover traffic on behalf of the board and the town, independent of the applicant, independent of the applicant's engineer. That traffic consultant has the licenses and credentials that this traffic consultant has. And I would like for the board and for the public and the town as a whole to hear from that traffic consultant, which has been hired on our behalf, before we get into, oh, you looked at the wrong month, or, oh, no way, is it sixteen percent going to the northwest? There will be a time for that. We will hear from the public on that. But I'd like to avoid doing that now without the benefit of our, of our own profession. I, I'd like everyone to be educated by that level of review first. That said, that doesn't mean we can't have any public questions on what we just heard. If there's something that wasn't clear, if you think that there is a type of analysis that was missing, I think we're all better for talking about that and fleshing that out. That's my opinion. If anybody on the board disagrees with that, please, but there we go. Any, any questions from anybody else? Anything we feel was missing or should have been covered, shouldn't have been covered?
I, uh, we covered driveway size, twenty-one feet to allow obviously one car in the driveway, one car in the garage, so two per unit or whatever. How do we account for visitor parking? And obviously, it's all on street. So is this road two lanes? And parking? Is it two lanes until somebody parks on the road to visit their friend? And now it's down to one lane? How is that accounted for?
All right, what is the, what is the width of the paved surface of the road?
Yeah, could burn, get back from, like, house, twenty-two feet. I suggest recommendation that will go up to twenty-four. So we'll have twenty-foot K-4s. So the traveled way, even though, you know, if you tire yourself on the curb, proper traveled way, twenty-two feet wide, twenty-one foot K-4.
So, so standards, is that two lanes?
Yes, absolutely.
So if somebody's parked in front of a house to visit their friend, Amazon's dropping off boxes, the landscapers in the road, we're down to one lane?
Well, a-actually, the length of the driveway, okay, is you're going to be able to have a car in garage, and you're going to have two cars in the garage.
Front to back?
With, yes.
Uh, you mean front to back? They said, they said twenty-three feet.
Yeah, twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three.
We, we have our two-car garages. I mean, there's a two-car driveway in front of it.
Two-car wide.
Right.
And then two cars deep after.
Deep, right.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-three feet is, is two cars in space. Cars aren't ten feet long.
Oh, exactly. So there's two cars in the garage.
Yeah.
Two cars behind those, side by side.
Correct, side, yeah, right, yeah.
So you're not going multiple cars deep. But I would say that, that's the dimensions we're proposing are typical for any residential subdivision. So they take into account the knowledge that grandma's over and parked in the road and Amazon's two doors down and parked on the road and, you know.
Grandma's parked on this side of the road, Amazon's parked on this side of the road, is the opposite, of course.
But, but, but to answer your question, these there's six cars of parking for each of these units?
No, no.
Four.
Two in the garage.
Two in the garage.
Two on the driveway, side by side.
Two on the driveway, side by side. I thought the driveway's twenty-plus feet long.
Twenty-three.
Typically, we have, even if, maybe two cars in that one.
Typical vehicles are over sixteen feet long, yeah.
And that was his.
And it's a typical vehicle. Susan, how long's your car? There we go. So.
It's, it's, the, the, his point was the car parks are usually enough for a vehicle walking.
Yeah.
That's why it's a regular, typical parking spots, eighteen feet.
Yeah. But we all, we all know how we park in our driveways when we have that Super Bowl party as well. So we're, okay, so four cars, if per unit, if, if Chris is coming over and maybe six cars if it's man suit.
But I believe we've all seen, I mean, somebody has the Super Bowl party and there's twelve cars in the garage aside. But those are the typical road widths that you would expect in a subdivision of this size and scale. It gets heavier if it's multi-family at that rate or if it's that many cars. But I, I don't think, but the fire chief, it remains an issue of who is concerned. Those sorts of issues.
Right. And while we're on road with Jeffrey, I think you alluded to it. I, I think what you were implying is that you're going to review what you just received from the fire chief and make any necessary revisions to the plan so they remove their concern regarding ladder one.
Absolutely, that's an absolute necessity.
Okay. How, how was he?
Yeah, and I think the you brought up is that just look at this. I think that the width of the paved surface of Route three A is like twenty-four to twenty-six feet width. So just to give you a benchmark as far as the ability to traverse cars, you know, that just gives you a sense as to what we're talking about.
Was he ever considered to make that move around the center of the road or the roadway?
No, we didn't talk about that. That could be a possibility, would help us potentially reduce the width. I've gotten so used to fire chiefs wanting the twenty-foot clear thing everywhere, that I've defaulted to kind of everything being two-way. With one way theoretically, you could go down to fourteen, and you should have the conversation with the fire chiefs. If he'd be comfortable, going down to fourteen, if you talked to Dan about if he'd be comfortable. Because you're right, it's not that much area, it's not terrible that those residents can go one way around it.
That's a good question.
With, with the relative to four, six, eight, ten, eleven, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen. It, it's going to be, it's going to be the fire chief. I think, I think the first step is we have a, a concern in front of us from them. It's going to be addressing that. I feel like we might be moving in opposite directions. I feel like going down the one-way, if it reduces the width of the street, it's going to make this worse.
So the information he provides us lets us test out and show that we're doing works. That's why it's great he's providing, Mark can run the numbers.
He's done this.
He makes sure they're comfortable. That's the whole point. So if the roads get narrower, it usually means you need bigger turning cases at the corners.
Yeah.
And he's going to want to be able to put his trucks where he, his trucks, usually twenty feet, that's what NFA is looking for. But fourteen could work because it's actually fourteen over there and fourteen over here. But again, it would be a conversation with the fire department. We planned for twenty everywhere because that's what the NFA requires. These are private streets, so we give the codes, it doesn't, it's not necessarily held to a town subdivision regulation.
Yeah.
So that's why we moved the narrow, we're trying to just slow traffic speed and reduce the purpose area. So it's always one of these balancing acts of how wide or how narrow you make the street. The other day we find if the fire chief's happy, everybody else tends to be happy. So I think that's the niche or sheet would be the harder to play with. And that they provide helps us make the picture pretty sound.
Yeah.
I have one question, so I had it in my notes from last time. If we get a response from Norwell Fire Department, is it so close to the line? I had in my notes, reach out to both Norwell and City of Fire Department.
I don't know if you told us if I know about fire directly, I. I'm not, I'm not well versed in the ongoing to the fire department, but I'm not sure. Norwell's fire chief would be that inclined to comment since it would take a. A fire, that would be a call to them to make them care, and I think they probably prefer a situative fire chief otherwise. But we could certainly.
This, this situative fire chief has jurisdiction over, obviously, the town's situation.
Yeah.
If they comment, they are aware of this project in the town hall in Norwell.
Yes.
I know that actually.
Yes.
In the reception, I think probably did.
Yeah.
So, um, you know.
Yeah, oh, it's necessary. I think I'd be, I'd be a lot more concerned if we hadn't heard from the situation. Please and fire, you know, the safety hat. Yes, ma'am, just your name and address again for us.
It was around, I think, how, will the community have a chance to talk with the peer review for the traffic?
So.
Beforehand, is there?
So not, not beforehand, but the way this will work, the way it's supposed to work, and then obviously we'll see how it goes. Is we'll receive a report from our peer review engineer. We will hopefully have a moment to review that, hopefully it will be available, but you might have a moment to review it. Before our next hearing. At our next hearing, just like you receive a presentation here, we can receive a presentation if the board thinks that's helpful. From our peer review engineer. And then that engineer would be available for questions just like the applicant's engineers ago. For questions from the board, for questions from the public.
So is that it's due in the book? What's anything?
Yes, uh, what, what I'd like to avoid is having the public and the board do a certain extent. Contesting the facts that have been, I, we. If we have another licensed traffic review engineer in the public that is interested. I might be inclined to let them speak freely tonight, but until the board has had their own peer review engineer review traffic. I'd like to avoid having the public or, uh, hell, I saw a couple of statistics in there that didn't look right to me. But I didn't go to school for this and I certainly don't do it on a day-to-day basis. I'd like to hear from our traffic review consultant until we get into, you know, disagreeing over the details. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have anything to add? Like, I'm not sure if you, or, or the road is going on, I mean, construction, we know. There's a green bush, you know, constantly, yeah. Is there any way that, I know it's a little bit farmed hypothetical because they're still being built, but it has also some reasons happening in the general vicinity nearby. So is there any way to somewhat factor that in or?
So the, I understand your question, the issue we get into there is. We're not able to say. You can't build here because somebody else started building over there already. What we look at is in terms of traffic. This is what we're building, it's denser than our code as presently drafted allows. And you need relief from our code. How much does this density that you need permission for increase X, Y, and Z? So we look at in terms of traffic, how much this density, and I'm using density very broadly. Increases traffic. To the area and obviously the rotary and the two intersections that were mentioned are everyone's biggest area of concern. So saying, oh, well, your two and a half seconds doesn't sound like a big deal. But if it's two and a half seconds for you and two and a half seconds for them and two and a half seconds for them. We don't get to choose whose two and a half seconds get to go and don't, really?
Missing in the area, though, like the density, why the general vicinity?
Yeah, even then, the, especially with a forty B. Saying until the town gets to its ten percent. The town doesn't have the ability to say, no, we've got other development going on, so. We don't want to approve this one because we've got other stuff going on. If that other stuff going on was also providing affordable housing to the town in the eyes of the state and got the town to its ten percent. Then your idea would be a lot more feasible as an avenue to modify or deny. But again. The other side of that is. If, if he's, if their traffic review consultant is underestimating. The traffic in November and the traffic in twenty nineteen and the traffic tomorrow. Then that is a valid concern or complaint about the review. And that's starting to get into, let's raise that question again. Once our engineer has reviewed their traffic analysis and performed some of their own. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Deputy Park two oh two, I guess, I, I feel like this probably is the right venue for this question, but. I think part of, of a problem with the increased traffic is that our public safety officials aren't. Enforcing the traffic laws as they presently exist. And that, I mean, I feel like Old Oak Bucket is a major conduit to Route three. For the whole town's situation. So there are a lot of people using it and those people are speeding and we don't have any sidewalks. And so increasing the density of traffic is really. Dangerous for us. I mean, danger for me right now to walk my dog three houses down to the grocery box. I have to keep jumping in and out of the road. And, I mean, I feel like this is not on the developer, obviously it's more on the town itself. Like, how can you keep allowing development without feeling to take care of the residents that are already there?
I think that's all a very valid concern. I think it is a little bit on the developers because they are adding cars. Now we're gonna find out and we've heard a report on exactly how many cars they're adding, but they're not taking away cars. And I, I think you have a good point there. I think, I would agree that I think it is a major conduit out to Route three and out to. Call it exit, exit fourteen, for those of us that have lived here for more than six months. But, and I think that really gets into what I was in my notes calling the RSA. The, the safety audit for Old Oak Bucket and Maple. And I, I think that, that that comes into there and I, and I think we've heard from the applicant that to the extent that audit. Finds that there is a way, even if we're gonna spend some money to upgrade that intersection or I imagine. The streets in some radius around that intersection to make it safer, and I imagine that's both for motorists and pedestrians. That the applicant is open to. Bearing some or potentially a, a good portion of that cost, obviously depending on what it ends up being. So I, I think your question is very valid and I'm somewhat optimistic that it might actually. Be addressed as we bear this out. I think that, I guess a good question is, say, all systems are go for this safety audit, what are we looking at in terms of timing to complete the safety?
So the, the timing of the road safety audit would prob, it would be within, it would get initiated within a month. Uh, because they have to collect some data and then they, I think the most difficult thing is, uh, all those participants I had mentioned, they have to. Schedule a date when they're all available to attend, so what I generally say is from start to finish, it's probably a two to three month process.
Um. All right. Yes, oh, look at that. They did it yellow, right? I wasn't looking for a blue circle. Uh, Gail Anderson, you would like to unmute yourself and, uh. Let us know your question. Or you're still on, there you go, and just your, just your address for the record, please.
One seventy-eight Maple Street. Um, have these traffic studies taken into consideration? Excuse me, the develop, the new development on, um. Three A. Like the traffic that will be generated from that new development.
Of course, so that, that's somewhat duplicative of a question that we just got, but I think.
Okay, the audio was, it's kinda hard to hear the questions from the audience, so I apologize.
Not a problem, but, um. Jeffrey, would you like to comment on just quickly how. Ongoing or planned development in close proximity to an intersection, in this case, the rotary is factored into your analysis?
Yes, and thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and I did, I apologize, cause I, I did a very high level overview of the transportation assessment, so. Uh, we do include, uh, development, other development projects, um, in our assessment. When we're looking at the impacts of the project, it's, um, it's seven years in the future, so it's the year twenty twenty-nine. Um, we're looking at the impacts of the development with and without, um, the project's added traffic. We did include three projects, um, in our future traffic volume projections. Uh, the first is the Drew project, so the Green Bush mixed-use development that's under construction. Uh, we included the, uh, project on Driftway that is the, uh, we've called it, it's a mixed use, but it's the gas station, the fueling facility, convenience store, restaurant. Uh, that's going in just, I guess would be clo, between the Drew project and the rotary. Um, and then the Seven Driftway project, which is the residential project that's being, um, built or proposed at the location where the former dental offices. So those three projects are reflected in our, our transportation analysis as well as just general traffic growth.
So not Herring Brook Meadow down towards, uh, the Marshfield line?
That wasn't identified for us to include in the assessment, but given how far away it is, it would be, we, we include a general growth rate, which was one percent. So that's compounded annually, so that, it's to the extent of that that project adds traffic to our study area. It would probably be included in that growth rate, but we could look at that in more detail.
Not that far.
How many units is it?
Sixty.
Yeah, so that's a sixty-unit development about to come online and it's gotta be. It's probably within a thousand yards.
Yeah, the one, the one percent, I, I, I'll look at that and see, because again, some of it's gonna head into Marshfield, most of it's probably heading to the Green Bush Community Rail Station or, or northerly. So a one percent growth rate may account for the increase in peak hour traffic, so we, we can look at that in more detail and, and be more definitive.
Anyone else? Yes?
Just.
Sorry, just your name, I remember it, but just for reference, thank you.
I think that everybody here that lives in the area will agree with me that the study that I read that was out of the plan. Says that, um, this traffic study was done between August and December. And if everybody here remembers, Old Oak Bucket is even closed, traveled at your own risk. And still the uneven roadway is up because they replaced all of the water pipes during that time. In the study, it said that people took the, um, rate of speed was posted at thirty miles an hour, the average was one thirty-eight. But once Old Oak Bucket is paved, it's online, it can pave very soon. I think we're gonna have entirely different numbers. I think the people avoided Old Oak Bucket. Because it was under construction and it was so bad. And it's still bad, but I think the numbers could be skewed from the traffic study on now.
Sure.
So I think that when I'm here, the person, they need to remember that that happened at that time.
Okay, I think that'll be something to cover once we have our engineer here in this part. Yes, sir.
Who is this engineer that represents the town that you're paying for it?
Sure, so we have you down for five percent. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
You know, I already feel it, I feel it in my pocket now.
The town has hired Merrill, what's the full name of the organization?
Merrill Engineering.
It's just Merrill Engineering, I didn't wanna shorten their name, but I thought that's what it was. The town has hired Merrill Engineering, which is a peer review engineer that the town is familiar with and has worked with on similar projects. The applicant has approved that contract and is covering the costs. The, that engineer is reviewing all engineering aspects of the project, all engineering aspects of the project. That the town in, in the applicant, we felt warranted peer review, traffic is one of those things. Absolutely, and that is entirely at the applicant's discretion. Anyone else on traffic acknowledging that that will be part of the town's peer review? And we will certainly be touching on this again. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, just a little bit louder, we got the things back here. Thank you.
I, my concern has been, is, is, is a hill and then this narrow lane, there's a curve. It changed the road, but I mean, it's dangerous. I'm very exactly, um. It is the, it caused them to go in and out to the, um. Development. Is it like across the street from the other road or is it?
No, it's not across the street from the other road. Are we able, do we have a plan somewhere that shows. The existing driveway for the property and the proposed driveway? If we pull that up, I think that's a pretty valid question.
In where you used to live.
Yes.
You're only heading north towards one twenty-three, there's a curve there too.
There, there sure is.
Only for Main Street, you have a bit of a curve here, but then it curves up and. Anybody that lives on Maryland, I, I, we take it lightly every day, um, cause I've seen so many accidents.
Sure.
You know, and I'm grateful that I have two driveways. That if somebody's on my tail, I have a choice to either put my brakes on and leave, they go Main Street, or I could then, you know. And again, not direction law, you know, and that's the economy, I put the two, so why would I be like in the driveway?
Don't, don't, don't succumb to pure fright.
Yeah, I, I, I tell you to do that because it's just, you know, let them go, but then also like, it's insane. That, that hill, and you can't see, and then coming the other way from one side, there's a sheet lying down there. And that one thing, they're coming down, there's a curve, you can't see. I know this is the all of a sudden lucky aside, but she did not see there. It took her practically out of the curve.
Yes, I.
We're gonna talk both places.
You, so, all right, so wait, I'm sorry, so your, your question about entering and exiting is valid, it was part of the review. Our consultant will also comment on it. I think, I, I do want us to see if we can, there, there, there's a driveway there now, now it's not a driveway for thirty-two units.
No.
But thirty-two people aren't gonna be exiting all in conjunction, they'll be behind each other. So I, I would like to understand just generally if the driveway for the project is, is more or less in the same area as the driveway now.
And I love the idea that there's gonna be sidewalk for those kids.
Yes, yes.
Within fellow buses, because I mean, because. Both ways.
Hard to see, it's a big turn, yeah. So I'm sorry, you said you wanted to talk about the bicycles.
I don't want to, I said, we won't even talk about the bicycles because those poor people are just, you know. Unfortunately, they're, 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 they're just gonna, they're gonna, someone's gonna get a bicycle because they're not paying attention. Lying down that hill just to, so that I can pedal when I pick it up, now they're gonna go, slip, they break so because.
Have you ever tried to pedal up that hill?
It's a swallower.
Well, we'll, we'll leave the cyclist out then for a minute, but, uh, Bob, will we be able to see if there's a. You know, there's a big change in the similar from the current driveway, so that's the, this can be really weird. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't believe this is changing.
Right, so, like. Je- Jeffrey, for, um, obviously there's an existing curb cut on the property. Did your analysis include. Where on the property has the safest sightlines for entering and exiting?
Yes, it's, it's where the driveway, it's where the access is proposed, um. Shifting it one direction or the other, the sightlines are reduced. So the ideal and optimal location is where they currently have it.
And then generally, and again, I'm sure our engineer will speak to this as well. If, if a driveway is, is in a bad spot, because of the road, because where it is on the property and whatnot, I imagine that the fact that more trips are coming to or from that driveway increases the likelihood that eventually there's going to be a wrong place, wrong time. But at the same time, it doesn't make that individual driveway more or less dangerous in that it's still one car at a time. Does that make sense?
It, it, it does, but I would never present a project to you that does not have a, that doesn't have a driveway that meets the minimum safe sight distance for the driveway. You, that's an app, you never create a new intersection that does not meet safe sight distance. So any project that I, yeah, any project that appears before you, and certainly any project I present to you, it's not going to come before you if it doesn't meet the safe stopping sight distance, and that's, that's why this driveway is where it is. Because we've said this is the only location where you could provide a driveway that meets the safe sight distance for operations of the intersection.
And those are, just for the audience, those are our, those are sightlines, both when exiting, how far you can see for oncoming traffic in each direction, and then for oncoming traffic, how close they are before they can first see a car entering or exiting.
Yes, exactly, and to one of the prior speaker's points, it's not based on the posted speed limit. It's based on the speed that people are actually driving, and in this case, it's, it's thirty-eight miles an hour. We've actually assessed the sightlines for forty miles an hour, not because we think that that's appropriate, it's highly inappropriate. However, that's what people, that's how people are actually driving on that roadway. So that being a fact, we have to provide the sightlines for how people are currently driving on the roadway, which is in excess of the posted speed limit.
Yes, all right, and, and those safe sidelines aren't something that you came up with, that's MASTDOTA.
It's actually, it's, it's MASTDOTA accepted, but it's, it's federal requirements. The Federal Highway Administration sets the requirements, MASTDOTA has to adopt those requirements, so that, that's where it comes from.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, sir.
Which is not being touched at all, and I'm sure would be if they were able to do that.
Can I ask a favor of the zoning board, possibly?
Possibly.
Um, any of you, there's a street right next door, Maryland Road, drive down, look at it, it's eight houses, two are technically old open bucket, less than thirty bedrooms, and then drive down the property that we're actually talking about and tell me if you can fit what they're proposing on there without delineating the wetlands. Because you should probably drive down to a property.
Again, Mr. Nelson, the wetlands on this site have been fully delineated. We have a plan fully laying them out by the registered here. The town has hired their own engineer to re-review those plans solely on the town's behalf.
Okay, so do you guys actually have a plan of their actual plan for building laid over an actual map with the wetland delineation on it?
Several plans, dozens of pages.
So can you show us one that's laid over directly on top of the wetland delineation map?
Uh, yes, we can. Those will be available in the building part.
Okay, well, alright, we'll go take a look at them, but I don't know how you can fit that much buildings on half of the billable land that we have on our road. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be a jerk, it's just the fact that the town doesn't care about the citizens of this town, and I understand the whole ten percent, but the whole point is, is every time you guys let forty B go through, they only have to do twenty-five percent, so we actually get less percentage of affordable housing every single time one of these things get built, so we'll never get to this ten percent.
Okay, uh, Mr. Nelson, we're gonna respond, we're gonna respond to that one quickly. It's twenty-five percent, we've thrown around some loose facts, just wanna make sure we try to keep those straight. The, obviously, you're frustrated at the density of this development, I think is a good way to say it. The development is certainly more dense than we see in town on average. We also obviously have some other developments in town that are this dense. I don't think the town would be in a position where we're approving at least quite so many of these if it wasn't for Chapter Forty B. And as this board has stated and attempted to explain at length in the past, Forty B provides a very narrow avenue for a town to modify or deny an application. Just the concern that it is denser than it should be, or doesn't look like the rest of town, doesn't come within a country mile of the standard a town would need to meet to deny an application. So we are, to the dismay of many, working with the developer here, working with their engineers, hiring our own engineer, to try to find the least intrusive manner to allow the applicant their rights that are allowed under Forty B, and that, quite frankly, the state mandates that the town respects. The town has taken the approach in the past that we weren't really gonna pay attention to Forty B, and we were just going to deny the application. And in those instances, it is my opinion that the town cut off its nose despite its face. As I've said at the outset of this hearing and at others, I'm going to try real hard to make sure that doesn't happen on my watch. Especially here, where while many understandably could be upset that this applicant is putting something this dense in this area, in this neighborhood, on this street. Overall, it's been my impression that this applicant is doing a pretty good job of working with us, of hearing us out, and as I really like to see, coming to us with an application that has some flexibility and openness built in. I don't want this town to take an avenue that dissuades applicants from doing that in the future. Because to be perfectly honest, they could, there could be a lot more yelling and screaming in these hearings, and they'd get whatever they wanted in the first place. Please. Fantastic, that's right. So, what the building inspector, Mr. Vogel, just said is, there is a section of the zoning board's website where all of the plans connected to this application are available online, and also there is an incredibly similar Forty B project, similar in characteristics to this one on Stockbridge Road, referred to as Stockbridge Landing, that is in the very late stages of development, I think is a good way to show it.
Am I still on?
Yes, you are, Mr. Nelson.
So, but you guys do understand the whole percentage part, right? Like, if we keep on letting these guys get away with only twenty-five percent, we'll never get to our ten percent, because
Well, it's not never, we're dealing with mathematical facts now. The requirement to get to ten does increase as we keep growing projects of only twenty-five percent, but it certainly is not never.
No, it doesn't. If I give you a bunch of seven hundred thousand dollar houses, and I give you two, two hundred thousand dollar houses, I'm just, I want you guys to start fighting for this town. I know it's already gonna go through because you guys don't stand up to anything for, against Forty B, that is what it is. Hopefully, you'll at least make him eliminate his Shell LLC, to protect his regular LLC, and maybe start standing up for the people of this town, because you grew, you said yourself, you live right, you used to live right down the street. And if you still live there, I think you'd be fighting a lot harder.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Yeah, anybody on the board, he was throwing some shots. Anybody on the board have anything else they wanna respond on? Please don't kill it. No, there we go.
Uh, just a few, um. What the state law requires in this circumstance is that there is a presumption in the law going into this application that the need of affordable housing outweighs the other concerns of the town, and that's in the state regulations, so there's actually presumption that affordable housing need outweighs. Uh, another point, on the issue of the ratio or the tenth, the tenth of the safe harbor provision, I believe that that's tied into census data and not that on any given linear basis, so uh, the number of the percentage of affordable housing relative to the total housing in the town is based on census data. Uh, and then, the other point that I would make, for what is worth, right, uh, but the other point I would make is, uh, there are more than, there are more ways for affordable housing to be created than just through the process of Forty B. Uh, I've been involved in various projects in town and in other towns in the South Shore, where we have voluntarily, uh, voluntarily de-restricting units outside of affordable housing, and the planning board works really hard to encourage inclusionary zoning, uh, and the state requiring that the towns, uh, further uh, include inclusionary zoning, which is bonus density, absent a comprehensive permit scenario in the context of a special permit. Uh, and that's also very, uh, you know, another way that affordable housing is created, so it's not just this. Uh, another way that is created is through the concept of rental housing. And then the concept of rental housing, uh, should you voluntarily de-restrict twenty-five percent of rental units, all of the rental units in that particular development will count towards the affordable housing inventory. So, uh, that's another way, you know, to kinda catch up, but just, you know, just kind of, you know.
And then just quickly, I, there's a lot of opinions stated as fact in this town when we get into politics and as we meet up at town meeting. I state a lot of opinions up here, but I'm very careful to say they're my opinions. I want to comment on something that Mr. Nelson stated as fact, that we're never going to get there. That was mathematically wrong. Very quickly, if the town started with a hundred houses and five of them were affordable, the town would have five percent affordable. If the town approved a twenty-unit Forty B, five of those units would be affordable, so now the town would have a hundred twenty units and ten affordable units. The town would be around eight percent. If the town approved another Forty B of twenty units, there'd be five more affordable units. Now the town would have a hundred and forty homes and would have fifteen percent affordable and it would be done. That's a very simple example. Mr. Nelson is right that as we approve more Forty Bs, there's more units, so you need more affordable units. He was right there, but then stating as fact that approving Forty Bs makes you never get to the ten was flat-out mathematically wrong. So I think we need to explain that quickly. I, uh, it bothers me when the loudest group on Facebook or in a hearing gets to present inaccurate things as facts. Yes?
Um, example, I'd like to give a big Jeff knows more than I do about this, but I believe thoracic has reached its ten percent quota. And, you know, looking at the development pattern of thoracic, uh, you would think, how could that possibly happen, and yet it happens. So there's no reason to think that the city would emulate and achieve that same degree of compliance. It's gonna take us a while, and I think Avalon was the kicker for thoracic.
It wasn't, it wasn't the kicker, it was, you got, you got them close, you got them right to the edge.
Okay.
The kicker were two projects that I was involved in, one on the three A, uh, at Stock and Shop.
Okay, at Stock and Shop.
Those were rentals, so we voluntarily did twenty-five percent rentals and a hundred percent of them counted.
Right.
And then, there's another one that's down in Pacific Harbor, I mean, in, uh, Pacific Harbor, in the vicinity of, uh, the railroad tracks over there, uh, where the exact same circumstances happened, where you rent the units and all of them accounted.
So.
So working with developers to encourage ways for this to occur is a key component. And, uh, that's, I can't state that enough, but having collaboration is, is, is a good portion of that.
I think who were the champions thoracic of this process? I assume the developers didn't come forward and volunteer to do this without a little bit of push from the town side.
No, it was the developer, it was us, uh, that, that, that put it forward without any question by the town, brought it to the town.
Anyone else, I think we're still on traffic. But so, detours are back. Uh, anyone else with any questions on traffic? Good on traffic. Again, for the time being, our engineer and then we'll be able to get it, did radio a little bit more if folks would like. Eric, do you want to see, is that, was that the last section of your presentation for this evening?
For this evening, yeah. I would expect the next meeting would be more substantive with respect to, because, simply because you'll probably have the peer review.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't have any expectation that we won't have the peer review in the next two to three weeks, I think, maybe, maybe four. They have a couple of weeks, I think, or at least four. We'll get to the bottom of that, you know, how it's, engineers are busy right now.
It, it would probably be, if you're thinking about whether the next hearing did, uh, I, I don't think that it would be, it would be good for the process to, to go to the next meeting with just a Forty, with just a peer review review letter and presentation by the boards consultant. Because all that would do would then simply require us to continue for another month so that we could do our response to that.
I would agree.
What I, what I would think would be better would be to anticipate the month it's gonna take, and then add a couple weeks to it, so instead of adding two months, we'll only maybe adding a month and a half to give our engineers some time to respond. That's probably the most sensible approach.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
And then we can have a meeting where we have point counterpoint, and they're gonna find that the engineers have collaborated and resolved some of the non, some of the easier issues to resolve.
And on, like, Bob, you've been building inspector while I was on board for some Forty Bs, where we found that that'd be the most productive stretch. When the engineers don't need to have an open meeting to speak with each other and come to understandings on each other's plans and revise their plans, are able to come back to us and say, our engineer has said on, on prior Forty Bs, this section of their plan I agree completely with, this section of their plan I didn't agree with, then we met in the middle, and honestly, I think this is a really good solution for these reasons, and here's the two, the, and whatever section of the plan where we don't agree. Like, okay, great, let's talk about those, because that's where we need to dig in. And having a meeting before those engineers are ready to do that might be a little bit more spitting of the means. And to be honest, not in the public and a butter's interest, because we find that the more meetings and pieces that we go through, more people get fed up, and less people show up, and we get less substantive comments, like a blinking speed sign, or like the question about something else, and it much as sometimes we get annoyed by some of the comments we get from the public, having you here does have a real value and makes this board and our decisions better. Um, thing, before we, so obviously, we're looking at continuing the hearing. Obviously, the bulk of the reason that we're going to be continuing the hearing is to allow a peer review process to play out. I'd like to discuss for a minute what else we want to make sure we have at the next hearing, other than some hopefully collaboration between the town and the applicants, engineers. We have that, the setback plan. I would ask that your engineers make some attempt at a basic general setback plan for the next year, even if you're not revising your entire engineering set for the next year.
We'll have that done.
Your traffic plan and layout, if necessary, is going to address the concerns of the fire chief. You're going to get us some more information and a plan of what you're doing or not doing with respect to the scenic street bylaw and the stone wall and trees that fall under that. I could give a little bit more thought to the school bus, just because I had, we just had to do a mandate comprehensive permit, we get to do substantial, not substantial, you all are familiar with this, for a school bus shop. I'd rather just talk about that upfront, because that's not the time list of the fire chief or any of the other stuff we're talking about, but just something else to throw onto the list. Um. Cedar fence along the property line of rendering, I don't, I don't anticipate that we care exactly, uh, where the wood was sourced from, but just an idea of what we're looking at. I think it's something eventually we're gonna have to flesh out. I think, I think the setback plan is the big other one in terms of our end peer review. Obviously, we'll work beyond. Also, we have reached out to the water department and the Water Resource Commission. We have not yet heard back from them. That's not because they're not aware they are working on it. And we expect for the next hearing to have some sort of response from them. Primarily, and I guess to disclose to everyone on the floor, the conversations that I had through the Water Resource Commission, then to the water commissioner, I, I think I might be butchering folks' titles, who, who's in charge of our, of our drinking water system? There's a gentleman getting his name right now.
Will Brin.
I think that might be.
I think.
The Water Resource Chair was communicating through, and the, the general consensus was, well, we don't have enough water for one more house. And like, yeah, we all know, but we gotta get more specific than that. They are getting more specific than that. And mainly, the question that this board is seeking to answer is, listen, our, our delivery system is, is the bigger trouble than actually having enough gallons of drinking water, is my understanding from, from the the folks that know within town. So my question is, thirty-two units, roaring, you know, with a big water tide. Uh, more people take showers in this town at seven PM on the Fourth of July than any other time, like, everyone's coming back from packing. All right, do these thirty-two units at seven PM on the Fourth of July, is that gonna make your water crappier than it is today? And if it is, is there something we can do about it?
Pressure.
Yes, pressure, delivery, delivery of clean water or average water, at least. Is this going to make a noticeable difference? If it is, is there something we can do to mitigate? Um, that's the answer we're trying to get. Obviously, these are complicated questions when you're dealing with underground pipes that aren't exactly brand new, but they are working on figuring that out and getting us a substantive response on that. Um, listing this out mainly to inform the rest of the board, because when we have these discussions, it's typically they in the building office, because the entire board isn't allowed to participate in those discussions without having a meeting, which requires notice. And you all, so we try to keep things moving, and also so the applicant can know what we are working on, so they can be prepared to address it, think about it on their own, and be more prepared for the next meeting. Anything else, anyone else is concerned about or wants to make sure we cover at the next meeting? In terms of overall, the general process, I know we get this question sometimes. It's hard to handicap these things. We do have a deadline, did you say it was October? Mid-October. In the past, applicants have worked with the board if they felt that the hearings were progressing to a good place for everyone. Honestly, at this point, I am hopeful and optimistic that we're not looking for an extension to that deadline. Um, but I think a lot of that will become more apparent once we have initial responses from our peer review engineer. You, that's typically when you know it, all right, we're probably gonna figure this out, or, oh my god, this is way worse than we realized, or somewhere in between. Uh, I think that probably matches up with people in your experience. They'll know a lot more on how productive we can be over the next couple of years, once we get an initial response from our peer review engineer. Um.
So just briefly, the water superintendent, Sean, is in, Sean is a division.
Yes.
Out of the DPW.
Yes.
And then Water Resources Commission.
Yes.
Committee, it's a committee underneath the board's select.
Yes.
Report to the select, who are the ultimate authority on whatever water issues they deal with.
Yes, but, and correct me if you disagree, unless the select have a specific thought on this, their
Yeah.
Athor, it's a very, the Forty B is a very strange scenario.
Yes.
There's all sorts of aspects of departments and boards within town that have authority on certain things, and all of their authority gets funneled to us for a Forty B, which, to be honest, in hindsight, doesn't make any sense, but that's the way the state did it, and here we are. Um, so yes, I've been in direct communication with the Water Resource Commissioner, just because I have dinner at her house a lot, we're close friends. Um, and she is in very constant communication with the water superintendent, the DPW, and the select, who are good respect to water issues. So until she tells me that I should be speaking directly with someone else, I'm working through her, but that's been the most effective way to have to address. And I know they are working on the answer to that question that we just discussed. So, I think we have a plan for a continuance. I think that anybody take vacations this summer? Probably talk about it.
Is George, can you participate in the meeting a little bit?
George was unavailable to work emergency this evening. I apologize, I should have covered that upfront. He said that he didn't expect that there would be a lot that he couldn't glean from watching the video, given he didn't have peer review back. He wasn't gonna be missing the opportunity to ask a lot of substantive questions.
Yeah.
Like you would at the next meeting. His plan is to fully review the reporting of this and to be a full participant at our next year.
Great, I, I love that, uh, I believe that there's a procedure that he has to follow in order for him to be able to be a voting member in the event that he missed a meeting, and it's not just like review the videotape, it has to sign and files and document it.
I'll turn it next. So, there is, there, there is
I, I think, I hear wrong, you should check with Cindy on that.
We will check with Cindy on that, and, and frankly, I was, um, surprised Cindy was there, right? Uh, I would follow up on that as well. Um, yeah, um, yeah, and, and then I, I, I'm sure I can speak for a minute, a little second. We had that form, and we did utilize it for a while, and then I'm pretty certain that we stopped utilizing it when the person that missed the prior meeting made that statement on the record at the next hearing.
Maybe that's.
Um, but we will follow up with the town clerk, and we'll, we'll help suspend that however necessary. Um. All right, so four weeks from tonight would be Wednesday, the twentieth, which is the night before our regularly scheduled hearing. And we all like to hear. Susan has said that she will not hang out with us two nights in the rub. Um, so I think we typically try to avoid that week, but it does get a little tough.
Well, we can try and do a six-week span again.
I think. So we, uh, we're talking about six weeks, which would put us at August tenth. Six weeks would put us at August third.
I, I'm, I'm blocked on the third, I'm surgery, so the next week.
Seems like a pretty good, I am blocked on the tenth. If anybody wants to rob my house, I will be very horrible. Um, I got cameras and stuff, though, so good luck. So then we are still away, I'm seventeen. Uh, yeah, so that's a little bit of trouble, I apologize. I will not be around for the first two full weeks of this.
So let me, let me recommend this, um. We're gonna work on an extension of the ultimate timeframe. Yeah, should it be necessary, I can say that on the record. I don't think it would be productive to have a meeting in July and I think that you should continue to chair the meetings. So I would recommend just doing it the week of the twenty-second. Uh, and, and I think that, I think that timeframe is a reasonable timeframe also with the peer review thing. It's gonna be a comprehensive review.
Yeah, um, I think you're, are you familiar with Merrill?
Yes.
Working with Merrill before?
Yes.
So I think to the extent the engineers make productive use of that time to quit, I've been to enough of these hearings now where I've seen them where the engineers worked together and came back to the next hearing saying, listen, they changed this, we agree with them on this, this is why we think this works and this is our last points of contention that the engineers agreed need to hear from the board from and maybe there's something else our engineer wants and you start talking about it's not financially feasible and we get down to brass tacks. Long way of saying, I think I agree with you. More time for the engineers to figure out how you will and won't be offering to modify your plan is probably beneficial to everyone. So we are looking at the week of the twenty-second to twenty-sixth of August. Does Tuesday or thirtieth of that week? Tuesday, Tuesday, twenty-third work for everyone. We're out of town. Tuesday, the twenty-third? Yeah. Tuesday. I have to turn back because I think August and July, I don't think we're gonna find some of the, a week that we're all five of us can make it. Um. What do you think?
Yeah, I'd like.
That'll be.
Twenty-third.
Now that's, uh, Labor Day week, back to school week. Yeah.
The next week, yes, yeah.
Oh, the week after that is, that's the thirtieth?
Instead, I think the thirteenth is a good one if, if it's possible to get.
So you were gonna watch a video of that one, yeah?
I guess it's actually before three.
No, it's before.
Yeah, it is, which I can, I said our, our hearing is the, is the week before. Um. All right, so any questions?
Good.
Yes. No application. Um, before we move to continue this hearing to the twenty-third of August, a Tuesday, any questions from the public, process, really, anything? Appreciate everybody's patience and participation tonight and, uh, don't wanna send you away for over a month if you have a lingering question right now. No? All right, anyone on, uh, on Zoom?
That's a negative.
All right. And if anyone has anything else, uh, motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, the twenty-third at seven PM and, um, at a location to be determined. You need to do some work on, have room availability, but it will absolutely come up on the, uh, on the zoning board's website. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I'm sorry, did you adjourn?
Uh, no, we didn't. We always do that, I always do that more specifically.
So, so, so you have adjourned or not?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.